Good evening and welcome to the Wakefield School Committee meeting of Tuesday, November 26, 2019. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and we'll start with our Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(inaudible)
And as we always do, I'll go read our mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident, lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Is there anybody from the public who we should speak? Seeing none. Well, ours. Student advisory. Adriana.
Hi, everybody. Um, to start off this meeting, we had our National Honor Society induction ceremony yesterday at the Galvin, and that's for seniors, and I also saw Mr. Lyons there. Right now, actually, we're having our student faculty basketball game, and that's the seniors versus the teachers, so it should be kind of funny to see. I'm excited to see who's gonna win that. We also have our pep rally tomorrow, and this is the first year that we're having it during school, so it's gonna happen during our log block. So it's usually the night before, but now it's during school, so the entire school gets to be there. And there's team performances, and music also performs as well. There was also a film showed last Wednesday at the high school, and it was called "The First Day," and this was about an NBA player, and about drug use and alcohol, and it was his story about it, and students and townspeople went too, and it was very informative. It was great. I went there. Coming up is the Thanksgiving game at Melrose this year, and it's at 10:15. And I figured out a little hint is that if you buy the tickets before at Smith's Drug, the money goes to the Wakefield Boosters and not Melrose. Which is a little...[176.12][176.12](laughter) My mom told me that. I was like, oh, I'll fill it in.
They used to sell them in the athletic office. They don't anymore?
At the high school?
Yeah.
I'm not too sure. That's what Mr. Kent's email said, but I can double check.
There was a time. I just, maybe it's not the case anymore. I don't know.
I'm not too sure. Continuing on with that, the winter sports begin on Monday after Thanksgiving, so there'll be tryouts in just the start, beginning of them. And we also had a homecoming last Friday for juniors and seniors, and this is the first one we've had in a while. We used to have them, and homecoming games, but we haven't done it in a while, so hopefully it continues, because it was really fun. It was for the juniors and seniors, so, because we have the freshman-sophomore hop, so it's a little different. And it's just exciting times for the seniors. We're gonna get acceptance letters if you did early decision or early action, and then I think everybody's excited for the holidays coming up, and the pep rally hopefully will get everybody excited, too. But yeah, a new quarter starting as well, so I think everybody's also excited for that, too. And I think that's it.
You know, the one thing I noticed years ago, I don't know if they still do it enough, was at Lexington High School, the kids put up a wall of rejection, and every rejection letter they posted on this board.
Oh, really?
They were embracing them rather than letting them depress them.
That's scary. I don't know if I can do that.[267.12][267.12](laughter)
It is exciting times. I was reading a lot of Facebook posts from Mr. Kent with all the teams and how well they're doing.
All the signings, I know. It's insane. I can't believe it.
Yeah.
Time flew.
Congratulations on being inducted into the National Honor Society.
Thank you.
It's quite a recognition, so congratulations. I'm very proud of you.
She's trying to get over to the basketball game. Anybody have any questions? Seeing none.
Enjoy.
I hope the students win.
Just keep them running. They're old, they'll get tired. If Mr. Stapleton could come to the microphone. This is a very sad night for us.
I suppose you could look at it a couple of ways.
Not for you, for us.
Well, I'm here because this, this is hard to believe, this is my last school committee meeting with all of you. I'm retiring December 4th, will be my last day, and it's been a 14-year run, and I was just talking to Amy tonight, that I don't know where this time went, but it just flies by. And so I wrote a little script here to, you know, say a little bit of what I'm trying to put together in 14 years, so we'll see how it goes here. There's nobody more pleased than me to report to you that Wakefield Community Access Television has become the TV station of Wakefield, and has grown out to rely on finding out about the community events, to watch town sports, to keep up with school committee meetings, to receive updates from our town council, and to stay educated and connected with everything in Wakefield. Stepping into the leadership position at WCAT in 2006, and being at the helm since there have been more, has been more gratifying than I could ever imagine in 14 years. I look back at all those years, and again, I wonder where the time went. So many changes and accomplishments have been made during the decade and a half. There is so much to be proud of, but none of it would have been possible without the help of such dedicated staff, hard-working volunteers, and supportive community members, consisting of my board of directors, who I will name, Suzanne Bowring was the board president, Ally Hutton is treasurer, Julie Smith-Galvin secretary, Lois and Dan Benjamin, Patty Bianchet, Elaine Gaietta, Rob Brogna, and John Murray. And my staff is Barbara Worley, studio administrator, Adam Nessel, video producer and editor, Ian McDermott, chief engineer, and Ryan Boyd, assistant executive director. And I would have great pleasure of saying that Ryan is going to be taking over as executive director when I leave. One goal that became a promise I wanted to keep was to make WCAT a place for all to enjoy, to create a space that had a wow factor for each person who came through our door. So many people have come walking through the door to our studios, and the most consistent reaction we hear from them is that WCAT feels like a real television studio. It was an impression that people new to the studio never imagined from outside. We've done a lot, but now what? There is no doubt that any decision by the Federal Communications Commission to limit or remove funding from community television stations would leave WCAT financially vulnerable. However, if we continue to advocate for local television programming, and we gather support for the people from Wakefield and others, WCAT can continue to bring great things to this community. I thank you all for your support, and it's been a great ride.
Okay. Thank you. No, no, Tom, no, 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 no.
All right. Well, you know me. I'm not in front of the camera much.
You know, being the old man of this committee, I remember meetings in the Volpe Library.
Oh, boy.
Yeah. And the complaints we would get from the public, because they'd have to turn their TV set up to, the volume up to 70 to hear anything, and the fuzzy picture and the videos didn't work, and it was taking a picture of a picture, it was the best we could hope for. And then you and I sat down and talked.
Right.
And it was a little bit of a sell to some members at the time, how being over here would work. But fortunately, you know, I was chair, and I got to the side. And over we came. And the improvement of how well our meetings flow was just outstanding. And you and your staff have, you know, made it so easy for us, and you're so accommodating. You know, any little thing we need, you just jump right in and take care of it. It's, you've been a fabulous asset for this committee, and we really can't thank you enough.
Well, I appreciate that, especially coming from you, Chris, because you were very instrumental of getting people to come over to this place. And if it wasn't for you starting this, we probably wouldn't have the town council here either. So they came over and...
Yeah, they were the latecomers, if you recall.
Well, I can't get too much that's involved in that one. But it's been, it's been a true, it's been a great pleasure, I should say. And I think that over the years, I've learned so much about how to operate things, how to take care of people's feelings, and keep, keep a great staff together, which I tell you, it is, they're amazing. And some of the projects that we've done in the past have been challenging, but they dig right in, and they get it done, and make it work. We are concerned about the FCC ruling that might come down, but at this point, everything seems to be on hold. Hopefully, because that's how they do things in DC. Or wherever. So let's hope they hold for a while, in my opinion. But it's been, it's been a wonderful ride. Like I said, I really, really have enjoyed meeting all of you, and all the people in the past. So I know Ryan and his crew will do a great job, and they'll continue on. You may see me once in a while behind the camera volunteering.
Great.
So I might be back, but thank you very much.
Any comments, or?
So I think, I'd like to say, from the school side, I want to say, you know, thank you, Tom, for always welcoming our administrators, welcoming me when I was new to Wakefield. I think one of the things that's undeniable is that you lead with your heart, and I think, you know, one of the things you said a moment ago about always being sensitive to the needs of the people that are here, I think is something that is, it will be part of your legacy. And I say "part" because there is quite a large legacy that you're leaving here, and I know that you rarely, if ever, talk about your own accomplishments, but all that's here didn't happen by accident. It happened with your leadership, it happened with your hard work, and so I think from us on the school side, and from all of our students, and from all of our faculty and staff, I'd like to say thank you.
Thank you very much. It's very gratifying to hear that. Appreciate it.
And we have a little something for you. Maybe if you could come up for the camera.
Yep.
We just, we did want to get you a going-away card.
$25,000.
You could really go away.
It's a little out of our budget, but you know, we can't thank you enough.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Take the hand, very handy. Nice to meet you.
Thanks for your work. Thank you so much, Tom.
Thanks for having me. Thanks for having me. Nice to see you.
You too. Congratulations.
Thanks so much, Tom. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. So now that Tom has gone off, off-camera where he's happy, I'd like to ask Bob Burnett to come up. He has a presentation for us from the Megan Burnett Foundation.
I have a late entry came from scoreboard company after I sent in the electronic stuff. I think I'm short.
Don't worry about it.
No worries.
I assume it'll probably change again before it actually comes in.
That's my favorite picture.
I'm glad to see they have the home team winning.
Yeah, it's the wrong color, though. It's Stonem, I think. So this is, I did some shopping, did a little homework, and I narrowed it down to the scoreboard company, and talked to them. We have, I bounced this off of Mr. Tolios, too, and Mr. Kent, and they're both in support of this. This, I'm not going with the kind that's real long and has every inning in it, and that sort of thing. I'm trying to cut it down, because typically, the more statistics we have up there, the more chance there is for somebody to screw up, or get bored, and you know. And then you're gonna have parents angry.
We're moving the break.
But anyhow. This is the basic structure for it. It's about, it's about 14 and a half feet above the ground, the columns, they're four feet apart. The overall sign is eight feet wide, four feet between them. The depth of into the ground, it's about, usually about a third of the height. At four feet is just a minimum code requirement. But the engineers from the town are gonna figure that out. I've reviewed this with them, too, and they're also, they're on board with it as well. This just shows the different types of supports that they can have. I was also looking to do a sign that was on the backside that says, like, "Home of the Warriors," or something like that, has the Warrior logo, because it'll be facing Beasley Oval, and that'll be the direction that the kids all go to the field, pass by that sign. And it's a fine-looking field. There's the old backstop with the new field, and the scoreboard would be located strategically in the shady area out here. So typically, it's facing north, and therefore, you know, it won't be vulnerable to glare from the sun, regardless of when, oops. Sorry, I went too far here. This just aligns the, everything, this is home plate, this stake is at home plate, and this pitch is on second base. So straightaway centerfield is right there, and that's pretty much where the flagpole would be going, and then the sign, the scoreboard would be over here. And this is pretty much the same shot on a less-nice day. Excuse me. But on this day, I had gone out and put cones out that were the right dimension, so I could get the sign at approximately the right scale, the scoreboard at approximately the right This, you probably remember from before, from a year ago. This is the New Diamond, the straightaway centerfield, the flagpole, and the scoreboard out here. There are some underground storm drains that run from here through, and come up to the white lands over here, but that won't be a problem. We were, at one point, we were wondering if the foundations for these were gonna interfere, or if they were gonna interfere with us, and we'd have to move them, but... This, I just wanted to show you Storm. Storm has a sign, their scoreboard, their scoreboard is a little bit bigger. It is, I think it's, yeah, 16 feet long and six feet tall. The characters, the numbers for score and inning are about the same height as what we have. But their problem is that theirs is facing the wrong way, so it's hard to read the score when you're, if those games, when the scoreboard is on. It's about six feet clear between the uprights and the fence, and it's also, it's a good idea to have 120-volt outlet out there as well for utilities. And this is showing where the Beasley scoreboard is, and the proposed new scoreboard. They're both basically facing about the same direction. So to get an idea of how it would work at any time of day, you could go up there and take a look at the Beasley scoreboard. The difference is, though, is that behind the new scoreboard, you have, if you're over here and you're looking this way, you're gonna have trees in the background, which are dark, or you have the school behind it, which is dark, whereas Beasley has a lot of light behind it. So, which, you know, makes it not quite as easy to see. This is taken from the upper parking lot at Woodville. This is where a lot of people, from here to the left, is where most of the spectators tend to congregate. So even from this, this point here, you can still see the scoreboard behind it.
Has the grass grown in that well?
That was real grass, yeah. Yeah. That's not photoshopped. It almost needs to be mowed. That guy, Dennis Fazio, working his magic. And this, this is just showing where the, actually, now, these photos are dated because the real fence is in. But that was just shown next to the fire access road, approximately where the things are, and then I roughed in where the sign would be, scoreboard, I keep on the sign, because that's what I'm saying, Paul. So that gives you an idea, just the relationships of buildings and the field. And that's the last one. This is the side that the players would see when they're coming from the locker room or whatever, or if anybody's parked in the other lot, you know, behind Field House, this is the way they would approach the field. And that was where I was talking about maybe having a sign, after it goes up that says, you know, "Home of the Warriors," with the Warrior logo on it. And a flat flagpole, the height of the flagpole, I wasn't sure of, I wanted to have it tall enough so that it was readily visible. I didn't want it to be, look kind of small. It's out in a big space, so I'm working with the, with the town, trying to come up with a good size for that. And that is basically it. The only, the only thing that's different is I passed out the pictures, because the, that is really more like what our scoreboard will look like, with the red and the amber numbers, and...
Will Varsity's name be on it?
Yeah, the, the name of the company had to be on there. They did have it in a worse location. I told them, no, we're not taking it. Fix it! And there also, it doesn't have anything else on there, like any other, like Blatt's Field or anything like that. We could always add that in, but I figured we'd do some more talking, see what was, if something was appropriate.
I, one thing we talked about, I think we need to record just for records, is the value of the gift?
Okay. It's about $5,000. The flagpole's about $1,500, and the, which was more than I expected, but the scoreboard, I think, was like about $3,500, and...
And you're gonna...
I think that, yeah, I think it's $3,500, yeah. And so five, about five should cover it.
And that includes the wiring of the board?
No, that's just the, the scoreboard and the flagpole. The, the things themselves doesn't include the installation or the connection.
Okay, but Varsity's gonna do the installation?
I'm sorry?
Varsity does the installation?
No, the DPW will do the installation.
They're gonna take care of it for us, so that's great. And they'll also do the wiring?
Yep.
Perfect. Any questions, comments?
They volunteered. It wasn't, yeah.
Okay.
They didn't have to twist their arm.
Well, they're very easy to work with, so not surprised.
Yeah, they've been great.
Comments, questions? Anne?
Just a quick question. So it doesn't look like there'll be any play for advertisement like there was on the Stonem.
There could, there could be, on the sign in front of, the Stonem one had a band that was sort of added to the top, and that could be done here, or it could be a band added at the bottom. But what I was thinking was that maybe, like, not having any advertising on it, you can have advertising on the fence, but having it on the scoreboard, it looks kind of choo-choo, you know? And it'd be better to have, you know, things about the team, or, you know, like, we could start having, like, for all the championships, that the team will be winning going forward.
Right.
Have it all up there.
Yep, okay. Fair enough.
Yes.
Is it appropriate to put the foundation's logo on the sign? Because it feels like it should be.
That, that would be great.
I was gonna ask the same thing, yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't know if we were gonna have something by the flagpole with Megan's name, or what your thoughts were.
Um, yeah, that would be great. I hadn't, I hadn't really thought too, too thoroughly about that. I was more concerned with the weather turning into winter, you know, making sure that everything got done.
We can address that.
Hmm, okay.
I'd love to see it on the sign, just because the foundation is donating the sign. It feels like it belongs there, and you guys have a logo, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, that, I think that would be a great idea.
That's a great idea.
Just, is there a timeline in regards to when this would happen? Do you have to wait until after the winter, or?
It's not as tight as I thought. When I first started doing this, I was thinking that we had to get the posts in the ground. But it seems that the post can go in pretty much any time, as long as it isn't more than, the ground can be frozen a foot down and it's still fine. They can still pop them in, and it's not a problem. It's one, when the frozen ground becomes deeper than a foot, that's when it becomes more difficult. So that's later on. The delivery time, from the time it is ordered until the time it arrives, is three weeks. They said it would be two weeks if it's before January.
Okay.
But from the start of January, they're saying it's like three weeks.
Great.
Which is pretty good.
Yeah.
And timeline, let's see. So, yeah, so I think I need to present this to the town council.
Okay.
And then, and I think, I'm not sure when their next meeting is, but then it would be after that.
Great.
That I could probably...
That's excellent.
Just touch base with the school and everything, make sure we have everything on the sign that we want.
Okay.
And the, the Wakefield sign has a place for two digits, but the opponent only has one.
I picked my son up at the Woodville, my grandson up at the Woodville. The field is coming out beautiful. You're doing a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Yeah, the DPW has been awesome with that. I go down after work, too. I have a problem.
Okay, Dorothy, comment?
No, we can help out with signage as we go along, too, and whatever we need to adjust or adapt to, we can. But I think on the school side, I would like to just say thank you for all of your work with this field. You know, it was probably about a year ago when we started this conversation, and look where we are now.
Yeah.
It's really amazing, so...
All started with you.
Yeah.
Those girls with juniors are gonna get to play on the field.
What's that?
The girls that came in as juniors are gonna get to play on the field.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. It's great.
Any other comments? Comments you have?
No, no. I was, that's great.
So we have a motion?
Okay. So move that the school committee endorse the gift of a scoreboard and a flagpole for Blatt's Field from the Megan Burnett Foundation with gratitude. Installation is anticipated prior to the softball season 2020 in a value, the gift is valued at approximately $5,000.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further comments? All those in favor? Thank you very much, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I have a quick question. If it, if it winds up costing more, and, you know, we cover it, do you need to know about that?
Just let Christine know.
Okay.
We keep a, like, a running tally of gifts and their values for a year, and then we have to, we have to report it somehow, but...
Yeah, I didn't know if, like, bookkeeping or tax-wise or anything like that.
Yeah. It may not go on to ours anyway, it may be part of the DPWs, but better to have it and not need it than the other way around.
Good enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Updates, I just wanted to remind you all that we talked about at our last meeting, December 7th. I have talked to Dorothy Presser, and that date is confirmed. I know that that's the same day as the holiday stroll in the afternoon, so our timeline is like eight to, you know, two at the latest. Okay? And we hadn't talked about our location, Galvin?
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
So we'll be at the Galvin School.
1/7, 1/17, yep.
Okay? And moving on to superintendent's evaluation. Okay, I, now that everybody is healthy and, and back for the most part, we have, you know, have a, basically, you know, a form and a format that the state, you know, Department of Education provides, and each of you was to meet with Mr. Lyons, discuss your thoughts, and then, and then record your, you know, your observations or your evaluations, and submit them to me. I have taken those and kind of averaged all the scores, and, and come up with one summary sheet on this very same document, but it's a summary of averaging all of those. And no surprise to anybody that, you know, Lyons can score very highly. One thing I should point out... One thing I should point out for the public's benefit is that we are very strenuously encouraged not to give exceeded, you know, top scoring. They, you know, they are very clear that the only person who gets this exceeded performance goals needs to be, you know, giving presentations to the rest of the state and, you know, being held up as a national role model practically. So if we're not hitting that, those exceeded categories, is by no means a reflection on Mr. Lyons or how we do it. It's just the way that the goals are set up.
Next, Doug. Something to work toward.
Well, we do need to give you a little room to improve, right? So with the, really, all of the performance areas, you know, he met all his goals. And the performance areas were all in the proficient area. I mean, there were a couple of exemplaries and, but, you know, most fell into the proficient area. And the comments were very positive. I'll read what I wrote for, like, a little summary. And again, they give you, like, a little box to fill in, so we're not getting a two thousand-word narrative here. But the committee had very, very positive feedback about Superintendent Lyons and his commitment to the students of Wakefield. He is described as being a dedicated, caring, thoughtful and hard-working superintendent. He receives specific praise for his work in developing curriculum across the district and the plan that's in place for continual review. If you recall, there were years, years and years went by and we had no real review process in place for updating our curriculum. And now we have a very formal thing. It's almost like preventative maintenance, the way I look at it. He was also commended for his engagement within the schools and the community. If you look around, Doug is everywhere to be seen. I'm sure his wife does not appreciate the town of Wakefield at times. But, you know, he rarely misses an event. And, you know, he'll double-book himself sometimes. And, but, you know, I think he spends more time in Wakefield than he does at home. The members were pleased with all the fiscal performances as well and the management of our budget. If you recall, you know, the budget did come back without having to freeze it. He managed the budget last year within the confines of what we had to work with. We were able to buy some things ahead for this year and still return a little bit of money back to the town as every other department in the town had done. Doug has proven himself to be a team player, working with the rest of the town leadership in an effort to create a very collaborative environment. And working collaboratively with all the other town departments can only benefit the Wakefield Public Schools as well. We, in my tenure, I have seen adversarial relationships and nobody wins. And Doug has really formed very strong relationships with all the other town administrators, department heads. And it's really been a very smooth process, so thank you.
Thank you for that kind of words.
Anybody from the committee which should comment on their specific evaluation, now would be the time.
I'll go. So I wrote down some things. I hope it's okay that I read it. But I, you know, you and I both started our new roles together. You know, so we're kind of going through it as we go. But you obviously have more experience where you were the assistant superintendent for a number of years. But I do think overall that, you know, you're doing a good job as a superintendent, considering you've only really been doing it for a little over a year and a half. And I'm sure it's a lot different than being an assistant superintendent. And again, you know, you kind of just are, you know, performing in your role as you go. So I think you're doing a good job. I learned a lot about your job, just kind of working along with you as a school community member. And there really are many layers to the job, from hiring administrators, directors and staff, to the development of the school budget and implementing new curriculum throughout the district, I mean, just to name a few. Those were some of the big ones that I noticed, you know, you work really hard to do. I'm impressed with many things that you do as a superintendent. You know, your commitment to high standards and core values, you know, I find, you know, very impressive. And your commitment to implementing new curriculum, as Chris said, at all grade levels to opt, for optimum student achievement. Definitely collaborating with district leaders, school committee members and various other subcommittees in order to develop a sound working budget, which is very important. So I really enjoyed the process last year and am looking forward to doing the same this year. You know, I definitely think you're proactive. You have a very proactive approach to improving learning strategies and growth, creating a growth mindset for students, which I'm highly impressed with. Some areas that need improvement, I think, is, and we've talked about this, it's creating communication in Wakefield with our families because I do think that there are a number of really good things that we do that some people don't know about. So, you know, maybe kind of getting that good word out there is something we can work towards. And also, I know we talked about maybe trying to upgrade the website so that, you know, it could be a more useful tool for our families. And I do think that we're at the point now where, you know, we're about to sort of step things up a bit or up a level in terms of our commitment to high-quality instruction. So with that said, one more thing I feel like in terms of improvement is, you know, I would like to see that, you know, that the negotiations continue to be a high priority, which I know they are, so that we can continue to meet student needs and maintain, you know, our highly qualified and competent teaching staff here in Wakefield because, you know, we do have some pretty special teachers here and, you know, we're in a really great place. So that is one thing that I would like to see continue as a priority. And thank you. It's been wonderful to work with you.
Oh, thank you very much.
Anybody next? Susan?
I'll go next. So I did not prepare, so I'm going to just kind of speak off the cuff a little bit.